Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming. We can go ahead and get started. If you can please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have a roll call?
Amy Lor.
Present.
Rick Berger.
Present.
Kerry Labella.
Present.
Stacy Killian.
Present.
Ken Warner.
Present.
James Skelton.
Present.
Christina Christ.
Present. Thank you all for coming here this evening. We have two agendas to get through. The first, we're going to open for review and discuss the potential projects for general obligation bonds of 2025. Mrs. Donna Wilson.
Good evening. Pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-20-3.1, whenever a school corporation proposes to issue bonds for the construction or renovation of a school building or buildings resulting in total costs in excess of certain thresholds, the school corporation is required to hold two public hearings on its preliminary determination to issue such bonds. Tonight's meeting represents the second of such hearings as the first hearing was held during the last school board meeting on August 11th, 2025. Notice of both public hearings was published in the Tribune Star as required by Indiana statute. Following explanation of the potential projects to be completed and presentations from Ice Miller Bond Counsel and Baker Tilly Financial Advisors, any interested party may give testimony and/or ask questions concerning those renovation or improvement projects. It is important to note that these public hearings and the consideration of the resolutions that will occur later during the regular meeting agenda are the very beginning of the legal process to issue debt. As we've discussed at numerous meetings over the course of the last several months, the school corporation has extensive facility needs. Working with Gibraltar Design as well as our other design and engineering partners, we've identified a list of projects that we are currently evaluating that would substantially improve both the working and learning environments of our schools. Projects being considered include HVAC improvement upgrade projects, emergency lighting improvement projects, fire alarm system replacements, roofing maintenance and replacement projects, domestic water service improvements, electrical system upgrades, and numerous paving projects. As we prioritize projects and obtain cost estimates, we will work with the board to secure all necessary contract and/or bid approvals and will keep both the board and public apprised of the work being done across the district. With that, we'll move forward to the legal and financing aspects of the proposed $12.2 million general obligation bond issue. Jason Tansel from Baker Tilly and Amy Cessaro with Ice Miller will review the financial and legal information regarding this potential bond issuance.
Hello. I'm Amy Cessaro from Ice Miller. We are bond counsel for the transaction. Pursuant to Indiana Code 2026-737, before a school corporation may spend more than a million dollars to build, repair, or alter a school building that will be financed by bonds, it must hold a public hearing at which explanations of the potential value of the project to the school corporation and the community are given. Similarly, pursuant to Indiana Code 6.1.1.20-3.1, a school corporation must hold two public hearings and adopt a resolution to preliminarily determine the issue bonds, which has a total project cost in excess of a...to iter bond, sorry. These public hearings and the adoption of resolutions are the very beginning of the legal process. These resolutions establish the maximum financial terms for the proposed project.
Thank you, Amy. Good evening. My name is Jason Tansel with Baker Tilly. Thank you for having me tonight. Tonight, we are here to review the necessary financial parameters that would be within your resolutions should the board elect to move forward. As Ms. Cessaro mentioned, we are establishing maximums here tonight, and these are maximums we cannot exceed but we can come down from. The maximums include the borrowing amount, repayment term, interest rate, and proposed annual debt service amount. So I do have a presentation that summarizes this information.
Jason, if you could just move the microphone closer to you so those who are at home can hear.
Absolutely. Is that better?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
So here we are at our second preliminary determination hearing on August 25.
The maximum borrowing amount being discussed tonight is $12,200,000. After bond cost of issuance, we are estimating $11,935,000 to be available for the project. The maximum repayment term being established is four years, but we know the school corporation may consider a repayment term as short as two years. Currently with the four-year repayment term, the estimated interest cost is just over $1.6 million. If the school corporation wanted to consider a two-year term, that interest expense would be approximately $961,000. The maximum annual debt service is estimated at $8 million, and this is a not-to-exceed. The estimated increase to the debt service levy if the school corporation were to elect a two-year repayment term is $2,346,000, which would equate to a tax rate increase of 4.95 cents on 2025 net assessed values. Currently, the school corporation's debt service tax rate is 22.45 cents, and its current levy is $10,644,000. Also below and provided are debt ratios that you would find within your resolutions discussing the maximum annual debt service as well as the direct and overlapping debt of overlapping units within the school corporation's boundaries. Because the bonds being discussed here tonight are property tax-supported, we also wanted to provide an overview of the bonds that are currently outstanding. Currently, Vigo County Schools has six bonds outstanding, and you can see that they are approximately $11.5 million of annual payments in 2025. Debt service payments are declining in 2026, and all debt is repaid by 2031. The fourth slide is a summary of the existing and proposed debt service payments for what would be the two-year term. So in gray, we have outlined the already outstanding debt obligations of the school corporation that we just reviewed on Slide 3. The teal-colored bar in Pay 26 and Pay 27, that is the proposed two-year repayment term, which, as you can see, we would correlate to a tax rate increase of 4.95 cents. These bonds would be repaid by 2027 if the school corporation elected the two-year term. The four-year term, these bonds would be repaid by 2029. And finally, because the bonds being discussed here tonight are general obligation bonds, we need to make sure that we are staying within the limitations available to the school corporation. This limitation is 2% of 1/3 of the most recent NASS value, which you can see here for Vigo County Schools is just over $4.7 billion. Factoring in the four other general obligation bonds, you will see that there is approximately $13,920,000 available to the school to issue a general obligation bond. So the $12.2 million being discussed here tonight as a not-to-exceed does fit within this limitation. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions that the board would have on any of the financial parameters.
Do we open for public comments or board comments or questions first?
You can do board questions.
Are there any board questions at this time or comments? We appreciate the thorough presentation and for your time to come here and be with us, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
At this time, we can...
And we had several questions at the last meeting.
Yes, we had several questions at the last meeting, so if you're watching at home and would like to watch that, please go to our YouTube channel and find the last meeting we had.
Could I just ask for a point of clarification? When you're talking about the increase, the net effect of what we're discussing here tonight ends up to the taxpayer not being a felt increase, isn't that correct?
The tax rate increase would potentially be an increase to taxpayers if they are not at their individual tax caps. So the two-year term would be the 4.95 cent increase. That would be on a median home. That would be approximately $28 per year. If there was the desire to go to the four-year term with no tax rate increase, then we would not anticipate a taxpayer paying more annually in their tax bill to the school corporation.
Okay, so what the four-year is where that?
The four-year would be the no tax rate increase, correct?
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? At this time, we can open it for public comments or questions? I don't have anyone signed up, but I want to give you that moment if you needed to do so. Seeing none, thank you so much for your presentation. Appreciate it.
Madam President, I move to close the public hearing on the GO bonds and open our regular board meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstain? Thank you. Moving on to our regular business meeting, we are going to have a presentation from Indiana State University Athletics and Vigo County School Corporation Partnership, and I believe Ms. Katie Shane has a few words to say before we get started.
Sure, I do. Well, I just wanted to introduce formally Tammy Schaefer-Schike and Nathan Christiansen from ISU. Tammy brought us last year, called me and said, "I have a great idea." Actually, Nathan had a great idea, and said, "What would you think about student athletes visiting all of the elementary schools?" And so I said, "Where do we sign up? How quickly can we make this happen?" And we had a fantastic year of High Five Friday, which they will tell you about, and we have some photos to show, but this is our second year. We had Riley Elementary was our kickoff last week, and we have some...our partnership with ISU is growing. So while we were getting stuff together for the beginning of the year and getting our first High Five Friday kicked off, I said, "Why don't you guys come to the board meeting, tell the public and our board a little bit more about the partnerships, what we've been doing for the last year, and what we have on the horizon?" So I will let them tell you all about it, but I just wanted to introduce them.
Thank you both for coming this evening. Welcome.
Yes, thanks for having us, and I just want to thank Katie and Dr. Himsel for allowing us to continue to grow and develop our partnership. I think it's really important that our student athletes really engage with our youth within the school corporation because they can really make a positive impact on their lives, and hopefully they want to go to, you know, continue their education after high school. So Indiana State is a great opportunity for them, but at the core of it, we want to make sure to highlight our student athletes, but also highlight our partnership within the school corporation. And obviously, it's been a pleasure to get to work with Dr. Himsel. You know, we had first...this past year, last year was our first year of High Five Fridays, and we wanted to build upon that, and he brought an idea for us with Reading Buddies. So Tammy has been a go-getter with this project, so we're going to have Sycamore Buddies as well, so we'll have five student athletes in our middle schools this year. But with High Five Fridays, we'll be at 17 Fridays throughout the course of this year, and then Tammy's going to touch a little bit on the CEO program as well.
So thank you so much for having us. Having athletes with small children, as we've done with the High Five Fridays last year and starting this year, the look on their faces. So those children get out of their buses or their cars, and they do this. And they look up, and they see those athletes and the smiles on their faces. The schools have been wonderful to deal with. The principals have been great. They come with their ISU shirt, Indiana State University shirts on, and it's just a joy. So that has been a wonderful program. Dr. Himsel asked for something else with a little bit of more of a mentorship kind of feel to it, and so this is just our pilot program this year. We will do the five middle schools. We'll have an athlete in each of those five middle schools for a three-month period so that they can have a one-on-one impact. The principal of each of those schools will figure out who they want our athletes to be with, and then we're going to kick that off by finishing the year with a celebration of the five athletes and their five buddies at the end of the year. The home men's senior game will have them and their families invited, and they'll be introduced on the court, which is a cool thing. So that's that part. I had the unique opportunity. Terry Bennett got ahold of me and said, "This is something you need to do," and I love Terry Bennett, so I said, "Okay, that's what we're doing." So I will be involved with the CEO program, and what I love about that the most is Indiana State University then is everything from that early childhood facility to high school. We'll have our hands there. And as Nathan said, the goal always is to make Indiana State not only something that they know about today, but that's something they know about tomorrow and something that they aspire to when they get to be...make those decisions. We want Indiana State University to be their home school in lots of different ways, so that enables us to make that from the little to the big trajectory.
And it's not only been our students. We've also noticed that some of the adults like running through the High Five Friday things as well.
We have noticed that. Yes, we have. We've had some groupies at different events, so...and we welcome it. Let's go.
We've had some parents get out of the car so they too can go down through the tunnel.
Hundred percent, and lots of photo opportunities.
And I would add too, you know, our student athletes enjoy it just as much as the kids do, and the opportunity for them to see this, like Tammy mentioned, the smiles on their faces. You know, I'm blessed that my kids get to be around these student athletes all the time, but when they get to go through the High Five Fridays, they think it's the greatest thing ever, too. So it's just a great way to cap off a week because we don't know what's going on in their lives, but if we can put a smile on their face right away in the morning, hopefully it makes a positive impact on their life.
I love it, and I know Katie had sent an email to board members to invite us to the inaugural year High Five Friday. I was out of town and not able to make it, but I would love to continue to get those invitations when you're in the schools, and if I'm available or other board members with their schedules, I'll run through there. I'd like to give some high fives and pose with Sycamore Sam and be a proud ISU alum with them, so.
We can make that happen for you.
Please do.
And that schedule is set, so Ms. Katie has it. We'll finish up in March, so we are...that schedule's already set for you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
I just want to say, I've long been a proponent of ISU being more involved in the elementary schools, but especially because we have automatic enrollment into 21st Century Scholars now, and we have to be talking to them before they're about the fourth grade or they are not hooked. And I love it that you're doing it, especially...I mean, I've got a little one at Fuqua Way. He loved it. I know we have other, obviously, other board members with small children, so we're thrilled about this and what that means, not only for our students, but for the future of ISU, too, because, you know, as these kids grow up and they get more, they see themselves as Sycamores. That's what we want, yeah? One of our major universities.
You mentioned Fuqua Way, so we had a group at Fuqua Way's Reading Council Night tonight. On my way here, they were reporting in to me from there.
Yes.
So when schools reach out with different programs, we are trying...not only do we have these things, but we try to be very much listening and partners in different ways. Obviously, we can't do everything every time, but when an opportunity comes up, know that Indiana State University Athletics hears and is trying to make sure that everyone feels special.
I love it. Great job. Thank you.
You two bring so much excitement to this, so thank you. I know both of you personally, and thank you. Just keep doing the good work. We appreciate the partnership.
I was going to mention these photos. So every school kind of does their own thing. Devaney had them...a couple of schools, but Devaney, she provided breakfast. Dr. Nutter, a couple of them have invited them, and they've actually gone through and had school lunch that the school then provided. We had the football team. They were something, even did the announcements that morning, and it was super fun. So one of the things that I like the most is, you know, oftentimes, we're like, "Okay, great, this is done. We've got to go to this or this." The student athletes, they stick around. They make sure they get their photo in front of the school, but they're always like, "Anything else we can do?" Never are they just rushing out, and I think we think of it like they would just be like, "Okay, this stinks, so we have to get up early and do this and get there." They hang around. I mean, some of them have to get to class, and they're good about getting out of there, but they...like, I want...sometimes I'm like, "Okay, thanks. Bye." Like, we're done. I think they stick around because I make the joke all the time, but if you're having a bad week, you know, High Five Friday is great. We all leave with a smile on our face, and they're right. We have had...we have staff, parents, and they all try to go around, and they were like, "No, come on." They're like, "Oh, okay, like, with a smile." So it's a great partnership, and I think it really has increased the student athletes' sense of community with us, but us with them, so we're excited to be able to continue that with ISU.
I think our line workers at Duke would like for you to visit.
We've started something.
Well, and I'll just add, thank you for what you do when you come to our schools, but the Sycamore Kids Club activities you guys do at your home games are fantastic. So I really appreciate the effort you do when the kids are coming to your house.
And again, I just want to thank, you know, Dr. Himsel and Katie for all their coordination help, and then also just his ideas of bringing to us, but also his willingness to allow us to bring some ideas, but also to Tammy. She's been a huge help getting this off the ground and as we can continue to grow this partnership.
I hope as we move forward that...I know there's a celebration at the home men's senior game with the reading buddies, is that correct?
The Sycamore buddies.
The Sycamore buddies, that the Sycamore buddies may come to a future board meeting and share their experience, too.
Oh, I'd love that.
Yeah, we would love to hear that. Yeah.
And that was Dr. Himsel takes all the credit for that. He mentioned it at a High Five Friday, and we just had to figure out how to get it off the ground this year, and then we intend to grow off of that.
We'll see how it goes.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. The partnership is very much valued, and thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
At this time, I will just announce if you have other evening plans that you need to attend to, you are free to go, but you're also very welcome to stay for the remainder of our business meeting, but don't feel bad if you have to sneak out. We are moving on to our first call of citizen comments on agenda items only, and I have one signed up this evening. No, is it...is that falling to facilities? Debbie, I have you signed up. Did you want to do first calls, comments, or the end?
I'm not going to do it.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Well, if you change your mind, please don't hesitate.
If I will, it was meant for second call.
That's okay.
It's only related exactly to...
That report. Okay, got it. I didn't know if it was maybe looped in with facilities, so...okay. I will ask again at second call. Thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up. Is there anyone else wanting to speak before we get started? Okay, moving on to our first business, we have the consent agenda. We move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstain? Thank you. We are ready to go move on to our new business. Personnel report and professional leave request.
Good evening. Administration requests approval of personnel and professional leave report as presented this evening.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel and professional leave request as presented. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second by a board member who's losing her voice. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Opposition's filled.
There is a person in every position. We are still looking for a CTE teacher in the middle school at Honey Creek. We posted those on Nimble. We have a counselor, but I believe we may have a counselor found for Sarah Scott, and that happened on Friday. Last time we were here, there was a opening at North for Ag and Fax, and that's in the packet this evening. We've filled those. Our goal is to look at our total teachers and hopefully capture them before they get out of our schools for the next school year and possibly at the semester as people might leave at the semester.
You said the Ag position has been filled?
Yes.
Great.
As soon as you vote on it, it will be.
Well, let me rephrase that. Not yet.
Yeah. Good.
Are there any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second for the personnel report and professional leave request. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstain? Thank you very much.
Now the position is filled.
It's filled.
It is filled. We've got them. Next, we have the August Accounts Payable Docket. Mrs. Donna Wilson, welcome again.
Hello again. The Board Finance Committee meeting was rescheduled last week because of a conflict, and we did meet on Wednesday, August 20th, instead of our normal meeting night on Thursday. The following claims were pulled for further review. Yonder Inc., $1,537.50 was for 50 locking cellphone patches utilized as a student engagement strategy for use during instructional time. So those are those magnetic patches that are, like you see at concerts.
How many?
Dyadax Incorporated, $2,217.68, math resources for grades three through eight purchased following a professional development opportunity that was facilitated by Rose Holman, and those materials were paid from Title IV grant funds. The pouches, too, I neglected to say, were paid for Booker T. Washington out of Title I funds. Rex Ireland, $1,026. Mr. Ireland serves as the backup corporation test coordinator per the IDOE's requirement and provided support in preparation for the 25-26 assessment season. That was paid from Title II grant funds. Brain Pop LLC, $57,795. That was the school-wide subscription for elementary and middle school access to over 1,200 topics, ensuring every student can confidently access grade-level curriculum with background knowledge. Teachers have access to on-demand professional learning courses to support an effective implementation, and the cross-curricular content includes movies, quizzes, and interactive activities. This digital platform supports teachers and students in all content areas, including but not limited to social studies, science, current events, math, English, language arts, et cetera. That was paid from the Education Fund Instructional Software and License Budget. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, I ask for permission to pay claims this evening.
We'll move approval of the August Accounts Payable Docket.
Second then.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Do you happen to know how many pouches were purchased for Booker T.?
Fifty.
Fifty? Just as a note, I would love to know from the folks at Booker T. how the implementation of that goes. We've heard so many things as school board members.
This is actually, I believe, the second time that we've purchased them, so I know we had to replace some, but I'm not...but I can find out.
Well, I just...I think it's very interesting. We hear about this a lot at school board, professional development, you know, and knowing that there's some kind of in a pilot program, so to speak. I would love to know. I guess I'm saying that to Dr. Himsel more than I am to you.
I picked up on it and wrote it down.
We actually did send media on the last year about how prospered it was, just...
I just think it would be fun to kind of hear that, not fun, but informative to hear from the teachers, maybe, or the principal, or whatever. or the principal, or whatever, however that works. Yeah, thanks.
Are there any other questions or comments on the Accounts Payable Docket? Thank you for the work that you do and always providing an update to the board after the meeting for the questions presented and then again at the meetings as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to approve the August Accounts Payable Docket. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, or abstain. Next, we're moving on to the KLIC Purchasing Co-op Contract. Mr. Tom Lintis, welcome this evening.
Good evening, Dr. Hemzil, President Killian, and members of the board. The Food Service Department is asking for approval to become a member of the KLIC Purchasing Co-op in the state of Indiana. Food Services will continue to use the same vendors as they have before, except for Stan Food Services. Stan's had informed the Food Service Office, they would know, they would not be able to provide many of the items requested on the RFP. We were informed on 8/12, the first day of school. They are currently having supply chain issues and would not be able to resupply our items from anywhere from three to five weeks. KLIC has been a program that Food Service has been looking at since the sale of B&amp;B. The IDOA has approved this early membership due to the nature of this crisis. US Foods is a major supplier for KLIC, and we believe that they'll take care of our needs very comfortably. Food Service is asking for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the KLIC Purchasing Co-op.
They call it the CLIC.
The CLIC, the CLIC.
I can't say it anymore.
Thank you, Carrie. We have a first motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments from the board about the CLIC Purchasing Co-op?
So where, we've worked, have we worked with them before?
They've been very involved in the School Nutrition Association. They have seven, 70 other school corporations in the state that they have dealt with, and private schools altogether. Vanderburg, Evansville is part of that group, and there's a number of other in the city of Indianapolis that are part of, a number of those townships are members of this group.
Thank you, Tom.
I know this is an emergency contract just due to our circumstances, but then how often would this need to be renewed?
It would be once a year, and then we would have to come, I think, again in late December or early January. Due to the commodity reprocessing and how that works, they need a six-month lead time with the Department of Ed to get that done.
We'll get it on the normal cycle. This was just thrown off because B&amp;B was bought by a vendor, and then the vendor who bought them gave us notice that they weren't going to service us, and we have kids to feed, so we needed to come up with an, it created a crisis, and we're trying to respond to that.
Yeah, and we're right in the middle of that now with running back and forth, getting food, and moving things back and forth. So some of the menus may be a little bit adjusted, but we're hoping in the next three weeks we'll be up and running really strong with this company.
Great. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Just appreciate your team responding so quickly, and we're feeding our kids, and the menu might be adjusted, but we're on it, so thank you to you and your team.
The team has done a great job, and I have to thank Clayton and Donna both for helping us through this period. It's been the most interesting for me.
Thank you so much. We do have a motion and a second to approve the CLIC Purchasing Co-op Contract. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, or abstain. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, moving on to our facility study update with Gibraltar.
Yeah, we've got with us this evening Chris Kingery. He's going to be giving you a little bit of update on what we've been doing since school has returned. We've been working with basically the next step, which is getting teacher feedback and figuring out how we go forward by gathering that teacher feedback on what the classroom of the future might look like. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chris.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me. Pleasure to be here and glad to hear that the school year has started off well. Wanted to update you on the work that's been happening in between meetings as we move forward, and wanted to focus on equipping a classroom. And our goal was to get staff and school leaders to think beyond what currently is in front of them. And so we appreciate the time that was given to us by the department heads at the high school, and then also the leadership teams at each of the high schools to take the day to actually go see these spaces with us. And the intent behind that day was, again, to help them see beyond what their current reality is, but also get some informal data from them through conversations to find out what they like, what they don't like. We then overlaid that with what we received from the staff input from the facility study, and then that's where we're at today with the prototype classrooms. Going to take a little bit of time to click.
Did you visit the same schools as some of the board members went to?
We did. We went to the exact same to give them the opportunity to see the actual science spaces and how the flexible environments, how they can adapt.
Great.
Also, general ed classrooms as well to give them kind of an idea of what can happen with some simple adjustments in the... Awesome. We've turned it on, and now we are ready to go. Perfect. And notice how she did that very subtly and saved my feelings, so. All right, I want to talk about our outcome-based planning. And so part of the reason why we wanted to do this is begin with the end in mind. So we started with the tours that we did with some of the board members that were able to go, and also central office leadership. And with the end in mind, we wanted to help the staff kind of start to visualize some of these spaces. And so that outcome-based planning is we want to also bring our, I guess, experiences of what we see in high schools across the state of Indiana and what's working in those spaces, and help expose the staff in Vigo County to that. Now, some of the science and research behind it, we know that what we're asking students to do today in the classroom is very different than what we experienced, or even what they experienced five or 10 years ago. We know that because of that, we're asking teachers to do very different activities in the space. We know that learning has turned into more social learning, and so because of that, there's a time when there's direct instruction happening, there is a time when there is small group happening, there are students collaborating, and then there's a time for lab. And you want all of that to be able to happen in the same space. This is just where we started to quantify some of the things through our informal conversations about what is, what is being asked of teaching and learning today in these spaces. Now, to put a little bit of research behind it, we know that there's some unexpected and some expected outcomes, and we know that there are different arrangements in a classroom. There's different type of instruction that's intended to bring out different outcomes for students. And so that's part of the planning as well about what we're bringing to these prototype classrooms. And then we went from, there are times that kids need to be alone. There are some times that kids need to be in group spaces. There are times that they have, there's a number of things, a formalized testing environment that the classroom has to be able to adapt to that. So again, just a little bit more research in what we're bringing to these prototype classrooms. So let's get to where we're at right now. So we've reviewed the research. We've synthesized our findings and our recommendation, and then we've moved into that outcome-based planning, so we know where we want to go. And then now we are designing these prototype classrooms. And think of a prototype classroom as a student and a teacher able to walk in a space that feels like they're in a different school, but it's actually just within those walls. You're doing it in a very cost-effective way for them to experience what they like, what's working, what's not working, so that when you do get to the part that you are designing, you have a lot of foundational input that was put into that. And so then we are moving into that iterate and develop, which we're developing, and then we want to track outcomes. And part of tracking the outcomes is that we want to make sure that we hear from students about what's working, as well as the staff members that are utilizing that space. And then again, the whole focus, the agility and the adaptable environments that we're looking for, we're not just looking on what they need to do today. We want to make sure that these spaces can adapt in 10 years from now, 20 years from now. And you do that by creating that flexibility in that space. Some of it can happen from the furniture that's in those spaces, but also some of it can happen with the room arrangement that allows it to be a little bit flexible. So we go into, we met with each principal and school leadership at each of the three high schools to identify a science lab and a general classroom that they would be able to turn over to be a prototype classroom for the year. It doesn't mean that it's just a space that's going to be wasted. It's a space where you can rotate classrooms in there. So it's not just one teacher and one set of students experiencing it. There is going to be a schedule and an opportunity for multiple classrooms to sign up to use that space to be able to provide that input. So again, one general classroom, one science at each of the high schools. And when I say you walk into that space, and we want it to feel like a new space, we're talking about new flooring and trying different types of flooring. There's been some advancements, and we used to just think there's a certain type of flooring in a high school. Now there's some options. We want them to experience those different options. From a marker board space, we're talking about the lighting and occupancy sensors in those spaces that we want to equip them with. More outlets, as we know, that as you move to one-to-one at the high school, we need to increase the outlets, and then also sound systems. And so think about, during COVID, we recognized there is a need, because everybody's wearing masks, to elevate the teacher voice. Well, that's now being included in every classroom, where you have the opportunity where everything that's happening out of the teacher's mouth is coming out of speakers from the ceiling. Creates a more engaging environment, and also when you're playing, you know, informational videos or things that need to happen from there, you have a better sound system that's set up that's already built into the classroom. So that, and then new paint, and to give that classroom a new feel, but also creating some variety in that space. We're talking about having anchored marker boards, but also marker boards that are agile and can be moved to work in small groups. And so same thing with the technology advancements in the classroom as well. So to give you kind of an idea, we did a walkthrough with the general classrooms just to get a baseline. We took our architects and engineers and our interior designers on a walkthrough to help identify those spaces so that we can, in a very cost-effective way, identify what needs to happen in those spaces. And very fortunate about your facility team that's able to do a lot of self-performing on these prototype classrooms, which is going to save quite a bit of money when you're developing the space. And also creating a plan for furniture is that it's not just a furniture that you're buying for just a prototype classroom. It's furniture that you would be able to use in other parts of the district. But when you get to the furniture, you already know and you have some input on what type of furniture is going to be best for those spaces. So those are the existing. And then we've started with the functional criteria. It's what do we want these spaces to look like? We offered some different, this is an actual square footage of one of the classrooms that we're taking over for a general classroom, but we want to show the different arrangements that can happen in that space with the furniture. We're also looking at the casework. Where's the teaching wall? We want to find some consistencies about, we have a recommendation where the teaching wall is, but that's not the case in every classroom. And so we want to create this benchmark that if it's a general education classroom in the high school, this is the benchmark for that space, rooted in experience and input from those that are going to be living in those spaces. So then we, again, want to make sure that the classroom can adapt to any type of instructional style. So we've shown some different arrangements here that show that possibility, depending on the type of delivery of instruction. And then here's a 3D visualization. If you're like looking in on the classroom, you take the top off. We're starting to have it come together about where do we need to put the outlets at? Where do we want the marker boards? Where do we want the technology to be in the classroom? And then what does that furniture layout look like? Do we want them on casters? Do we want the tables to be mobile and move it? Or do we want them to be fixed? All of those different factors, you can kind of see the variety of what we're going to provide in the prototype classrooms. Let's move to science. Are there any questions about the general ed classrooms? Moving into science, obviously a little bit more complicated here because you have a lot of casework, and you have a lot of sinks, and you have some other factors that are happening. So again, being very strategic about making sure that the investment that you're putting into that room is going to meet the needs of what information we need to get out of it, but also something that you would be able to reuse. So here's just an example, pictures and photos of your existing science labs. And you notice the fixed tables on the lab tables on the exterior. Science classrooms today that we're adapting to are allowing those spaces to be more flexible, where you have the table for a lab, but that table can also double as when you're doing whole group instruction and move to the middle of the room. The purpose of that is, you know, when we used to design science labs, they were for one, it's either this is a biology room, or this is a chemistry room. And we're making science rooms now that can adapt to any single one of those. And so it's part of the furniture, it's part of the layout and all those factors. Again, here's the functional criteria that we will be reviewing with staff that we'll talk about here in a moment, but this just gives an idea of what are we talking about, where is it located in the room? Do we have this in the right spot before we implement this plan? Again, here's another layout of a science lab. You can see where the tables are anchored on the wall and how they can also be moved to the middle of the room for instruction. Here is a 3D visualization of this space, if you're looking in on it. I'll give you kind of the idea of the difference between the furniture that we're seeing in classrooms and the layout of science labs versus what the current reality is. So next steps for us, we do want to debrief with the staff that participated with Dr. McCormick and I on that day when we went and visited those classrooms. We plan to circle back with similar information of what you're seeing tonight just to make sure that we heard them accurately and give them one more opportunity to give us a voice on what needs to be in those prototype classrooms. And also, is there something that we have in the prototype classroom that they don't think is necessary that we wouldn't spend money on? And so we want to make sure we get that right before we move forward. We're going to continue to finesse these layouts that you saw today to make sure that we have it right. We have an ongoing meeting once a week with the facility team just to make sure that we are aligning the scope with the budget and the timeline and the schedule and all those different factors that need to be into play. And then we have already started contacting vendors to get kind of an idea of the timeline, how long for us to get furniture, is there a lead time on certain items that we're looking at for a technology to make sure that this is right. We plan on having a finalized schedule probably within the next week, once we hear back from vendors to know. But a target that we're shooting for is that, you know, it's nice that some of the classrooms are not currently being used at the high school, so they can start work there immediately. There are some classrooms that are being used, so there's going to have to be a temporary adjustment to move to a different space and then come back to that. But we're thinking that just after fall break, definitely before Thanksgiving break, that there would be an opportunity to start getting students and staff in those spaces. Keep that prototype classroom open until the end of the year to be able to collect that data that we need. So we will finalize that schedule and the data collection part of it about what does that look like? And we're ready to go. I mean, it's pretty exciting. I think it's different to talk about it, see it on pictures versus, I'm going to take my class in there and I'm going to see how they respond to this. I'm going to adjust my instruction a little bit because the space will allow for that. And so we're excited to be able to get that and want to document the journey and be able to bring that back so that the board understands, the community understands about what's happening in these high schools and how is it working? And so a lot of talk tonight about the high school and also, you know, prototype classrooms for the high school, but don't want to lose sight on the elementary learning. And so one of the things that we will be doing this semester is we'll be working with the elementary principals to develop a baseline for what does elementary learning look like? And so at the end of the day, we'll be able to have a published booklet for the board that will be a consensus of all principal input to say, every elementary and every child will be able to experience this and be able to learn in this type of opportunity, no matter what elementary school that they're at. And so we want to bring that to the board so that there's almost like a template for when you do an elementary school, these are the components that are important to the, to the school leaders that are in that space. Also combined with some of our input from experiences across the state of Indiana. So very exciting.
I agree. It's very exciting. I was actually contacted by a teacher that, I don't know if, I don't think she attended the visit, but talked about the prototype classroom, and she was, she's all in. She's ready and just thinks that's very unique and different that we're doing this time to help better our facilities and give input from our teachers and our students. So thank you for bringing this. I think this is a great opportunity for us with our teachers.
Great.
Basically, what we're doing is we just want to make you aware of the fact that we're trying to make sure that when we go through and modernize each of our buildings, we're doing it in a way that the teachers have feedback and input into that to make sure that we are designing the classrooms that they need so that they work the way they need them to work. But the big part of this is, as Chris said, is to try to make sure that we do it with some flexibility, because if anyone has the crystal ball and can tell me what it's going to look like 15 years from now, it would make it easier. So how do we make it flexible so that 15 years from now, we've got a classroom that's designed that we can adapt to whatever it is that's in front of us at that time?
Absolutely.
When these are finished, is this something that we can bring the community in to take a look at as well so that they can get an idea of it? I mean, I know the purpose is to get the feedback from the teachers, but I'm just curious.
I think that's definitely something that we can have a discussion about, about what that looks like and how that is. I think that one of the things that happened when some of the board members were able to go and visit, and I think the... to go and visit, and I think the same thing happened when we just had the recent, uh, principals and, and building level staff go, is that you don't know what you don't know. We're so accustomed to just making what we have work, that we don't realize that there are other things out there that, where the building can become an enhancement to learning, instead of a detriment or workaround to learning. And I think probably the community's in that same boat, so we don't know what we don't know, and so therefore, the more education we can do about what is available to teachers and how that can transform their ability to do their job and help our kids succeed, um, would be worth doing, but we would need to work out the logistics, obviously, and have discussions on what that might look like.
And at, at a minimum, we plan on documenting the journey, and so I plan on bringing, uh, coming back to the board to provide updates on the experience, the outcomes, and, and, um, how this is being perceived, you know, by the students and the staff that are using those spaces.
Yeah, I, I think that visualizing that in real, not even visualizing, but just like coming into contact with concrete things, um, that, that represent what the vision is.
Yes.
Um, I think that's so critical, that we haven't done that before.
Right.
We haven't had that opportunity. Um, keep saying, this is not the same rodeo, this is a different one, and we've, you know, really done the homework, so thank you for presenting tonight.
Yes, and I plan on returning once we, uh, get these launched and ready to go.
I can't wait to see them.
Good.
Is there any other questions or comments from the board?
Are you going to be here till the end of the meeting tonight?
If you would like me to, yes.
Thank you for staying to the end of our meeting, then.
Yeah.
Um, there's not a board action on this, correct?
No, this was just an update, this was informational only, uh, we just wanted to let you know that we continue to work, we continue to figure out how to make the reorganization plan that we, um, affirmed back in June, to continue making steps to, to make it become a reality.
Yes.
Thank you. Our next item of new business is board consideration of project relution, resolution exhibit A, Mrs. Donna Wilson.
So tonight in your board packet, you have three separate resolutions that need to be acted upon separately. So the first one is the project resolution. A project resolution is required when the school corporation plans to spend more than $1 million per building. The resolution states that, that estimated hard and soft construction costs are 11.935 million, I think if you will recall back, that's what Mr. Tansel discussed earlier. The cost of issuance is estimated at 265,000, and that results in a total estimated project cost of 12.2 million dollars. You'll find that the resolution also contains the estimated tax impact that Mr. Tansel discussed earlier this evening, we ask for your approval of the project resolution.
I move approval of the project resolution, exhibit A. Second.
We have a motion and a second, are there any questions or comments from the board on the project resolution exhibit A?
I think we've had very thorough presentations about what's in this, and, uh, I would just reference previous board meetings also that are available on YouTube, if people have additional questions, always reach out to us, but thank you for the very thorough presentations.
Seeing no further comments, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstain? Thank you.
The second resolution is your preliminary determination resolution, I will tell you before we move on this, that, uh, this resolution, we are required to advertise it and would advertise it in the Tribune on Wednesday if approved, so I'll just let you know that. The preliminary determination resolution is required when a school corporation is planning to finance more than a certain amount for a given facility. It contains the total project cost, again, of 12.2 million dollars, the maximum annual payment and lease term and other financial terms, um, such as the estimated principal and the tax impact that Mr. Tansel also discussed earlier. Those maximums are again stated in this resolution, and there is a form of it that will be sent to the Tribune if approved. We ask for your approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary determination resolution.
Thank you, Mrs. LaBella, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for the board consideration of preliminary determination resolution exhibit B. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Just for clarification, is this for the two-year payback or four-year payback?
What we're doing is it's set up to where you can make the choice on September 29th, all we're doing is the maximums, nothing is set in stone, you have until Sep-, whatever the time is that you officially do it, is when you get the chance to narrow that down and decide.
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, we have a motion and a second to approv- to approve the preliminary determination resolution exhibit B. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstain? And next, we have exhibit C.
The final resolution is the reimbursement resolution. The reimbursement resolution permits the school corporation to reimburse itself from bond proceeds for any cash which it might spend on the project prior to the sale of the actual bonds. This resolution is required by federal tax law. We ask for your approval this evening.
I move approval of the board, of the, um, declaration of official intent to reimburse exhibit C. Your second.
We have a motion and a second, are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have, um, a first and a second for approval of the declaration of official intent to reimburse expenditures exhibit C. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstain? Thank you so much. At this time, we are moving on to comments and our second call for citizen comments, and this can be anything you would like to discuss. Um, I am getting a signal from the audience that we do not have anything current, but I want to give that opportunity if anyone else was wanting to sign up. Seeing none, we can now move on to information from our superintendent and board members.
Yeah, good evening. First, I want to remind people tomorrow, um, Tuesday, August 26th, is a two-hour delay day. This was a pre-scheduled delay, it'll be used for teacher and staff training and professional development, tomorrow specifically is used to take care of many state mandates and state requirements that have to be done, and it gives the, um, teachers the opportunity to complete those. We want to congratulate the North Patriots, that even though they lost to Beech Grove on Saturday, they, our students this past Saturday became the first in the history of our schools to have the girls' flag football team here in Vigo County. Our Honey Creek Middle School welcomed back an al- an alumnus, um, back to the campus on Friday, it was NCAA track and field champion Jason Swerens. I was fortunate to be able to be present for that, and I can tell you that it was really cool, um, the kids asked some outstanding questions, um, of Mr. Swerens. It was the Honey Creek and South Vigo High School graduate, visited classes, and his mom, who happens to also be one of the teachers at Honey Creek Middle School, shared stories and advice with the students, and as I said, answered many, 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 many questions that the students had, and they were actually very well thought of, and they did a very nice job on, on getting some meaningful information. And not only was I able to be there, but Mayor Sackburn was able to be there, um, Principal Ryan Kamen was able to come up for a few moments, as was South Athletic Director Ed Jarvis, and we appreciate all of them being able to be there, um, and support Jason. After visiting with the Honey Creek students, Jason was also honored at the South High School Football Game for his accomplishments at the University of Wisconsin, which included Big Ten and NCAA titles, as well as a school record at the University of Wisconsin. He is currently, as we learned, training for the 2028 Olympics in Los Angeles, so we are hopeful that we will have another native of Terre Haute participating in the Olympics in a few years. We also want to say congratulations to all the teachers who earned a Vigo County Education Foundation mini-grant, we awarded 169 such mini-grants last week. These awards totaled $105,000, which is a record amount for the Vigo County Education Foundation. Thank you to everybody in the community who donated to the Vigo County Education Foundation and made these mini-grants possible, and thank you to, um, Jane Nichols and Jennifer Kirsch, and all the work of the Education Foundation Board to make sure that all of this came to life and we were able to do, to do this, um, and especially, again, thank you to the generous donors. We mentioned Indiana State earlier today, um, early in the meeting, but I also want to say thank you for those who participated in Donaghy Day and came to some of our Vigo County School Corporation schools. It's an annual event of Day of Cer- Community Service for the Indiana State University students and staff. For many years, our Vigo County School Corporation schools have received some packaged meals that to take home, for the students can take home with them, that are packaged by those who do the community service, and we had hundreds of meals delivered to several of our schools last week and distributed to our students, so they can take them home, and we thank the Indiana State University students who participated and made that possible. Lastly, I want to say congratulations to Brett Taylor, who was recognized by the Tribune Star and the Local Chamber of Commerce at its annual meeting as one of the 12 under-40 award recipients, and based on the work that I've observed him do over the past few years, it was very well deserved. So, and again, thank you for a great start to the school year. We've gotten, um, to kind of give you a little bit of a comparison, my first year here in the school district, if you remember, we were short many bus drivers, and we struggled in the transportation department, and on the first day of school, um, it was after 5:30 that the last drop-off was made. Throughout that school year, we struggled to get any of the drop-offs before 5 o'clock, um, it was just a struggle that entire year. This year, on the first day of school, the last drop-off was at 5:03, and since that time, the second day and thereafter, we've had the last drop-off in and around 4:40, which meant by the second day of school, we were on a mid-year kind of trajectory in terms of our routine. So thank you for the parents who got the kids to bus stops, our bus drivers who did a fantastic job of learning the routes ahead of time, um, that is quite a difference from two years ago, and it is because of the great team that we put together at the Transportation Center, and the work that they've shown and the dedication they have to our students.
Other comments from board members?
I just want to, as an addendum to the, the award that Mr. Taylor won for his work as a, one of the, that outstanding young leaders in our community, um, I just want to give a shout out to our Chamber of Commerce for putting on a really outstanding annual meeting, several of us were there, um, not only was it just an absolute blast, we had a great time, um, but there was just kind of a crackle of energy, I thought, in the air, at several people remarked to me, um, you know, the excitement about the future, and, um, it felt really good to be celebrating Terre Haute and thinking and talking in those terms, and, um, so I just want to thank, uh, Kristen Craig and her team, and congratulate all the award winners, because, um, in addition to that, we had some, some fabulous people from the community winning things, not the least of which is our friends at the Excel Center, um, with Goodwill and, um, you know, the great, uh, kind of complimentary partnership we have with them, so at any rate, I just wanted to say kudos to our chamber, they did a great job.
Everyone's looking at me, yeah, you can always count on me, yeah. Yeah, I know, I know. Couple things, uh, this community, the community is really excited about our plan, and if you, it's just so exciting to hear people, uh, coming up and talking about the plan that we have. We have a plan, and we're moving forward, so it's just so exciting to see that. Commissioner Clankinbeard, thanks for being here, and your support from the county, it's all takes a village of people, and appreciate everything you all do too, and the county council. Thank you to our 2,200 employees, wow, you know, like Dr. Hemsel said there, we started a great year off, and it takes all of us to get us to that point, so thank you there. And I've heard a lot of great stories at the start of the year, I mean, it, all of us have, and, you know, as school board members, we're going out to the schools too, we're taking that time to listen, as, as Dr. Hemsel does too every week, but, uh, it's an exciting time to be on this board, and again, you've heard me say this, you don't hear many board members say, I'm proud to be on this school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
I think it's, too, was we've been making the, doing those things to the schools, to hear the enthusiasm of the teachers, which we've never heard before, didn't hear it last year, really didn't hear it the year before, obviously didn't hear it when it was voted down, but they're excited, they're, I mean, they're excited about what can be, they're enthused, uh, they're supportive, uh, they're bringing about, uh, discussions and questions and things, and it wa- it's really refreshing. I'm happy we're moving in the direction we are.
Um, Rick and Ken had mentioned board members are going out into our schools to just be a listening ear, there's no agenda there other than to listen and to hear concerns or answer questions about the facilities reorganization or other items, as Mrs. LaBella and I experienced today at one of our high schools, um, people want to talk to us, and I think too, talking to some of the principals, board members haven't done this before, some of them trying to remember, so it's something different, we understand there may be some hesitation, or just, I don't want to say an uncomfortableness, but maybe just a reluctance to understand why we're coming into the buildings, but I just want to reassure everyone, it is to, it is with good intent, it is to talk to you, um, and hear concerns that maybe you're hearing as teachers from parents or other coworkers, I just appreciate those coming in to talk to us and just to share their experiences, but it takes a lot to corral this seven-member board and to get things on our schedules, um, things have had to be readjusted several times. One, thank you board members for being willing to go out into our schools and to make it a priority in your schedule, but also to Catherine.
Yes.
Um, she has been amazing, um, to work with and to email and text with, um, I, I think I texted or emailed at least three times today, hey, we have an adjustment, can we check on this, um, send her screenshots of the schedule we have, so Catherine, thank you, you are a joy.
Thank you.
And a pleasure to work with that you keep us on task, um, so just, again, continue to reach out if you'd like to talk to us as teachers or staff, we're coming to your schools, if you want to talk to us one-on-one or in so that, some other capacity, we are willing to do so, so thank you all, and thank you for the work you put in to make this school year a great success, as starting so far. Any other question, or any comments, or, um, good things to share? All right, well, moving on, our next meeting is September 8th, here in the administration office, our boardroom, thank you all for coming, enjoy your, the rest of your evening, but I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn. My second.
Motion is-